Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one big A one concerning personnel matters involving evaluation of interim town manager and employee interviews. Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one big A three involving acquisition or disposition of property and one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one little A eight consultation with legal counsel and that we will go into recess with closed session until after this meeting.
Second.
And can I get a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn. Yes. Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, and now Councilman Clance, could you leave us these and pledge allegiance and the invocation will be Mr. East afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us for the invocation, please bow your head at this one. Thank you Heavenly Father for the many blessings you have given us. We ask your continued guidance in all matters and as we conduct the business of our town, in your name we pray. Amen.
Are there any modifications for the public session?
Mister Mayor, I move that we add to the agenda Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two and twenty twenty dash thirty-three, both of which are Resolutions appropriating funds.
Yes, sir. And can I have a roll call for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
And for the clerk's benefit, that'll be fifteen B and C on new business.
Okay. Do you say anything to that? I heard someone, but I couldn't.
James.
That's okay, sorry.
Now, I would like to welcome all of the guests that are here today and the audience online. Can I start with the presentations? Would that be the...
They're on the presentation.
There's nothing, so let's move on to the public hearings. Appropriation of grants and capital projects. So let's open that. For public hearings. Nothing? Close that one. And then Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty appropriations for grants and capital projects. Need to open. And are there any...
It'd be some discussion, if asked for discussion.
Okay, is there any discussion for that? With that? Then close that and can I get a motion for that?
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty, Resolution appropriating funds for grants and capital projects as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Now, we'll move on to the public comments period and I think I have Mr. Gary Martin.
Yes. Anybody knows, I'm Gary Martin and I live on a town property for close to forty years. I worked for the town over forty years and I received a letter last week or so to remove from the property my double wide in, you know, and I have thirty days to do it, like I'm able to do that. And I'm here to ask if there's any way, like, that plans when I first moved the double wide out there, I was told by the town manager at the time and my recreation director and all that the spot of land with my double wide is sitting on could be surveyed and if I want to later on buy it, you know, when I retire. And that was seventy-eight years when I was told that before I retired, you know. So I'm here to ask if I could, per se, they could survey the spot where I'm living instead of making me move after I lived there for forty years and I got very enjoying living there with me, you know. This don't cost so much for me to have to move from a little spot they don't even use anymore right now. And I don't know why they brought it up for me to have to move all at once. This is the little... Just telling me I have thirty days to move and that's what I'm here for. Asking y'all to look over the situation, you know, help me where you can, whatever. I would like to just to buy the little spot of land, but that's all I was asking.
Anyone want to ask some questions?
Sir, Gary, was it ever discussed at the time that that would be a permanent location or how was that presented to you?
It was discussed when I was given right to switch out trails from a single wide to a double wide. It was discussed like when I retired, you know, that's only seventy-eight years later or more, but I didn't think I was going to have to retire. It was discussed and at one time, the town manager and Mr. Up and they was surveying it out there, was going to survey in sections the McGill Village Park, you know, at one time they was going to do that. But I guess they got so caught up in equipment or whatever, they losing his job and everything was going crazy at the time and I never hear anything else about it until a few years later I get this, just in the mail.
So you lived there previously?
Yeah, I lived there ever since eighty-one, eighty, eighty-one, nineteen eighty-one.
Was the, you said it was a single wide there originally?
It was a single wide, Leroy Ward early, if you remember, anybody remembers him. He's the one that took me. He brought me all the way from Case North and he, yeah, in his offices, I got a proposition for you, I'm going to build you a lot out there at McGill Village Park, a permanent lot, that's what he told me. I had no record of it, you know, that was years ago, that I could live as long as I want to and I was just kind of like a being there, you know, being a watch. That was just to be there close to the park to keep the angles from tearing it up some of the, because that building got broken in there every weekend or whatever, until I moved out there. That's when they had the law and stuff like that, you know, their equipment. It was being used, but now it's not, you know, we don't have the repression for this.
I want to ask one question here. In all these years, and I think you touched on it, but I want to hear again, clarify, nowhere at no time did you request anything in writing, nothing period, that's just, you probably said it, I'm just asking you again, there was nowhere writing says this?
Not, no.
Okay.
Not that it was permanent.
It's what?
Not that it was permanently, I mean, I, because that was twenty years earlier, back in the days, you know, Sam built my lot and everything for me and knowing that's that all I got. I've got this letter, but it don't say nothing, it just don't say permanently, I can just states when I was getting my double wide put out there, I had permission from the council.
The reason why I ask is our town manager brought up a really good point, the manager, correct if I'm wrong, a manager does not have the authority to make anything permanent, it has to come before the government body can be voted on. And I've been up here for eight or nine years and I don't know that we've ever voted on anything that, so prior to this is what I'm asking.
Well, we was over the train station when we did, when we voted on keeping getting my double wide. Which is probably states in this letter right here if y'all want to read it.
Who was this letter from?
This is what I got when I first, when I moved my double wide, when I got up to here.
That's right.
I was signaling to a double.
What was the date of that? He's mentioned that five or six times.
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
That came before whatever the father, the council meeting, I guess, had to vote for him to be able to bring this new double wide in, right?
Yeah.
That's what this was for.
I don't, I don't know the proper etiquette, this is my first council meeting and then to apologize, but I'm actually the sales manager Clayton Holmes who sold Mr. Martin's double wide in two thousand and seven. And on short notice I was asked to be here, but I do have a property owners agreement signed by the town manager, somebody over the town, I just wasn't able to produce it tonight. A property owners agreement allows us as Clayton Holmes, when the customer does not own the land, it is somebody has to give permission for that home to be placed on that land and that's the only way we could upset the homeowner of the new one. I've just not been able to provide that.
I apologize, I thought you were going to...
I'm sorry.
Did you say there was a motion at the train, there was a motion made at the train station?
Yeah.
In this, around the time of this letter, I assume?
Yeah, it was a motion was, I can, I went to the council to try to get permission to get a larger trailer, I had a single wide to get a double wide.
And that's when the, is that two thousand and seven when Clayton?
It was roughly somewhere in the proximity of November to December of two thousand and seven.
I'd be curious to know what the specifics of that motion were.
I think it's, you'll see in this.
Oh, it's in that, okay.
So, Mr. Martin, if I can understand you correctly, the request you're making of the council today is that we, we survey the land and let you purchase it? Is, were you, was the plan for you to purchase all the land?
No.
Okay.
It was just that little section with my double wide, which is not on, you know, it's...
Is that on the road or is there access?
Well, the road's always been there. For some reason they don't think that the road's been there, but the road has always been there since I've been working for it, since it was built, McGill Village was built, because that was a service road for the other maintenance wanting to get to the building, basketball court and soccer field, you know, for the teams to get up to.
I just wanted to make sure I understood your request, that's all.
Yeah, the road's always been there, I didn't build the road, it's always been there. It just got gravelled, it's usually just dirt, you know. Because the town used to take care of it, they put me in the gravel down, you know.
Thank you, thank you.
So this, this agreement transpired or what, or verbal agreement, whatever it was, with you moving there initially, that was when Parks and Facility, or excuse me, it was actually Parks and Rec? Prior to Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec in the eighties, oh, yeah.
Right, so it was prior to Parks and Rec going to the county.
That's...
And then it became Parks and Facilities and it just, so you just continued at that point?
Yeah, because it was still county preparation, well, I just, we just wanted facilities and normal, we just took care of the parks.
Yeah, well, then that recreation, so this all went away.
Which is what McGill Village Park too, which still took care of it, because it was, it wasn't run by the county, McGill was, the town was.
Right, but they had taken over the ball games and all that.
They just took over, you know, the bottom, they just bought it.
I was trying to get the timeframe.
Mr. Martin, do you mind if I ask you about this license? So basically, the way I read it is that they agreed that you could occupy the property and curtail it, which is fancy lawyers big for the land around your house or double wide in this case, for so long as he is a full-time employee at the town of Pulaski. And that your tenants say your right to be on the property shall terminate no later than sixty days after he is no longer a full-time employee with the town of Pulaski. That was your understanding at the time?
Yeah.
Okay, that you were, you were, they were okay with you putting the double wide on there so long as you were employed by the town?
Yeah.
And I'm new, so I apologize, I know you will, but that you're no longer an employee of the town?
No.
Okay.
I retired.
Okay, all right, but then you didn't...
But before I retired, you know, that's when the process was in to survey the lot, before I retired.
Okay, okay, but...
But it never come through.
But that never got up to the council or anything like that?
They seemingly never, they kept saying to me that, matter of fact, there was a guy of mine, I had one time looking at the land, he was telling me all his...
But you never signed anything about that or anything like that?
No, I never did, it rang up to me, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin actually maintained that property since nineteen eighty-one. I mean, he was the sole maintain, maintenance man for the whole entire property.
Sure, no, I understand.
This is not, why would you make that?
I'm good, Michael just read it, so I understand.
Mr. Penn? I agree. It certainly sounds like an unfortunate situation where we had some, sounds like on your side, you had some handshake, you know, kind of agreements with folks that apparently, you know, apparently may have potentially spoken with, you know, or could have spoken without necessarily going through the channels to make sure that stuff was, you know, handled appropriately, to make sure that you wouldn't have, or we wouldn't be in a situation much like yourself to try and go back now and readdress what wasn't addressed at that time.
Yeah.
Certainly appreciate you bringing it to us and talking to us about it.
We'll discuss and see what we can do.
At least give me more than thirty days and I got a double wide. I got a finer place I can put it. It costs.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, I think some of the gallery probably is here to talk on his behalf and they don't understand the process, so, you know, if you guys want, if you want to clarify how you'd like them to address it, you could just ask, you know, raise a hand who wants to speak and if you guys want to speak, you can go up to the podium and, and, and speak as you desire to the point, but if that's, if that's the way the mayor wants to run, that would be the suggestion, so whoever wants to speak to this point, would you raise your hand with the mayor?
And I'll let you come in.
No, and then you can say your name, your address to the, to the, to the mayor and then address the council, you have, you have a couple of minutes to do something.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I'm Brandon Questonberry, sales manager, Clayton Homes in Dublin. I'm not a town resident, I'm a county resident, but I'm here on behalf of Gary Martin. I've known Mr. Martin for roughly twenty years. The whole time I've known Mr. Martin, you know, he's always taken care of that property and, you know, I've got here on short notice, but I actually searched for the paper I told you about, where he actually had permission to put the home there, that had to be sound by the town in order for us to put the home there. I just couldn't find that paper before I got here tonight. I haven't even got to read his letter, I don't know what his letter says, but roughly from what I'm understanding, it's given him thirty days to vacate the property. And I just think that, you know, I know you might not know Mr. Martin like I know Mr. Martin, but I think you need to give it a little time and consideration and see if it is feasible, maybe to sell just the parcel of land where he is at, because it's going to cost Mr. Martin ultimately money to have it moved and if we're buying it, or if he were to, able to buy that piece of property, I'd rather see that money go in the town's pocket than I would to some random contractor who's going to move it across town or wherever it needs to be moved to. You know, I've looked at the map and I'm not, you know, I'm not educated when it comes to this, but, you know, I know there is a road that goes up to Mr. Martin's house that is a question. Maybe there is a possibility or a way where he can actually access his property from the McGill side to be able to terminate everything with the road on that side. I just ask that you take some consideration and just look into these things before, you know, you make a decision that Mr. Martin has to leave the property that he's been there since nineteen eighty-one and he has maintained since nineteen eighty-one. Also too, that being said, you know, I don't know where I was going with that, you know, I just, I just think that if he were, you know, if the ultimate decision of this, he does have to vacate, you know, I've been in the motorhome industry for seventeen and a half years, I've worked with the town and I'm not, I haven't dealt with any of you guys personally except for Mr. Questonberry, I think you and I have talked over the years. But I do know that a permit process takes time as well and when given thirty days to be able to vacate the property, you're looking at fifteen days in the permit process alone and won't you find a place to even put your home? So, two things, you know, hopefully we can get a decision to where maybe he can possibly buy the parcel of land from you and let that money go into the town's pocket. Or if he does have to vacate, please give him ample time to be able to handle it in a gracious way.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Amanda Martin, my brother, um, he's worked for the town since nineteen seventy-five, blood, sweat, tears, we all grew up in all these parts, my brother, my children grew up in that home, we all grew up there. I don't know how or why it came, like, where the decision, why he got the letter to move out in thirty days, but he can buy it if he needs to, he will, and I just don't feel like it's fair for somebody that's been a member of the community, the town, that's taking care of the town day and night regardless if he's needed, when he worked for the town anyways, he was there, didn't matter. He would drag us out if he had to, but it's just not fair, I don't think it's right and like, that's our home, you know? It's not right. And if he does have to move it, he needs time, he can't take a home and split it in half and have it moved within thirty days. It just can't happen. Does anybody know why he got the letter? Why did he get that letter?
You want to know why what?
Why did he get a letter saying he needed to move in thirty days? Like, who sent it and why?
I sent the letter. I am the interim town manager, I'm the one that signed the letter and I'm the one that sent it. I visited the McGill property based upon a complaint that I received from a citizen and in the process learned for the first time that there was a home occupying the town property.
You were just, you just, when you visited, found out there was a home there?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's been there since nineteen seventy-five?
I've been here three months and the first time that I had been out on that property, once I visited and learned that it was occupied by a former town employee, I began researching the town's records to determine what type of arrangement Mr. Martin had with the town to be on that property. I could find nothing.
Right.
I was told by a number of individuals, but I couldn't verify it in writing, that Mr. Martin was advised that when he retired, he had to relocate.
It also states in the letter that you guys read or whatever the agreement, that it would be discussed between both parties also.
Ma'am, I had not seen this letter or heard of it until this evening.
Right.
When I spoke with Mr. Martin and his son in my office last week after he received the letter, he did not mention this. The only thing I knew was that the town had no records. Your father indicated that he understood there was a plan for him to be able to purchase. When I asked what was the purchase price, he said that was never discussed.
Right.
There were no records that he should have been on the property in spite of the fact that he had been there for a number of years. I felt it was my obligation as the town manager to notify him that he was, I had no records and I believe if you look at my letter to him, it says that I could find no records or evidence that he was officially allowed to be there, therefore he had to vacate. And I indicated thirty days. I was asked when he came to my office what would happen when the thirty days lasted if he had not moved and I told him that we would have to start eviction proceedings at that point. There had been no discussion of any, you know, additional time, he's not come forward to say, I need sixty days or whatever it might be to move the trailer, can I have that? Nothing has been discussed in that matter.
Well, that's all your name.
Well, all I'm saying is, all I know is what I have and have not been able to find in the town records up to this point. I had asked for and gotten a copy of this other letter that he mentioned tonight so that we can have that in the town's records.
Right. Well, now that we've found the letter, obviously it states something different, but I still don't feel like it's okay for somebody to come in that's been here for three months that knows nothing about the town, the people that live in it, the people that have worked for it for their whole life, to be like, okay, well, since I can't find anything, let's kick him and his family off the land. That doesn't make any sense.
Just as a point of interest, Ms. Virchum did the right thing.
She did.
We have a legal obligation to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Right.
Basically, because it's public property, it's not ours, so, so I think that's just important to know.
Yeah.
So we support what she's done. I think where we are now, it's unfortunate that along the way, a lot of folks didn't do the right thing.
Right.
Whether it be recording the agreements or, or following up with the retirement, which I believe that letter indicated that there were sixty days after the retirement to purchase the property. So, so I think the ball's been dropped along the way and so, so what I would like to see is do as council, is to go back and, and understand what our options are, understand what is, what has transpired as best we can, even though it's not legally bonding.
Right.
We certainly want to give everybody a fair shake, but that everybody, because it is public property, includes the public.
Right.
So I think we need to do some more fact finding and figure out what the options are. I, I, I'm going out on a limb here, I think everybody understands that thirty days is a short period of time, but it has started the discussion and I certainly, as I said, supporting Ms. Virchum in sending the letter and bringing it to the attention, attention of this council and your father.
Yeah.
It's an issue that we need to resolve. So I don't think we're going to determine tonight how we resolve it, but I do think we need to do some more fact finding and see, see what a reasonable solution is for all involved to the best of our ability, including the public, who we ultimately answer to, and that includes your father.
Right.
But it also includes the rest of the town.
So with the thirty days, like, is the clock still running on that? Like, how does that work?
So, it's Ms. Martin, is that right? So, the thirty days is because as our legal representative, Ms. Virchum has to give you a timeline.
Right.
It has to give you something to start with. I, I, I think the all of council, I can't speak for them, but I believe that they would all support her if she was, if she and Mr. Martin together collaboratively figured out a practical solution that doesn't involve wasting money.
Right.
Of anybody's, whether it's the towns or your families. So, you know, we're, no one is going to be thrown out on the street after thirty days, okay? At the same time, there are going to be consequences to not communicating with Ms. Virchum. At the same time, there are gonna be consequences to not communicating with Ms. Burson or someone else at the town offices about your needs and your wants and what you can and can't do.
Right.
Um, I believe Ms. Burson is a reasonable person who will come to a reasonable solution. But at the same time, like Mr. Reese said, we have a, we, we represent the town, we're, we're the custodians for the town.
Right.
And so we have to, you know, have that conversation with you.
So communication is...
And, and so I fully expect that if you communicate with Ms. Burson, she will communicate with you. That is, I have no doubt that that will happen, that if you tell her that, hey, you know, if you get to, we get to the point where, you know, they have to move and you say, well, we can't get the guys out there until, you know, forty days? I don't believe that that's gonna be an issue, but that will require you and your father and anybody else involved to maintain that communication, to respond to phone calls and emails and, and text messages, or whatever, whatever form of communication you use. But I, I understand from your perspective that you're very worried about that thirty days. But this is the, as, as Ms. Burson said, this is the beginning of the process.
Mm.
Um, and it can go in lots of different ways, but I would just say that if you are communicating, then we can be reasonable. If you fail to communicate and fail to respond, then we have to go, the only way we can, which is go to the courthouse. And then it becomes far more complicated. Um, so, that, that's sort of the, that's my perspective on it, um, and I hope that, does that address your concern somewhat?
It's very, yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bur- and Mrs. Bur- would it be appropriate since the, since the letter was a piece of, you know, documentation that we didn't have, but apparently, you know, I guess was at least presented that it came from the town, for us to postpone the thirty day timeframe to a following date to give appropriate time to review what was presented? And as Mr. Reese...
I'm journeying to look at it as well, but it's very clear that Mr. Martin was to leave after employment, after sixty days. Um, and has not done so. I don't see that it offers, or, and it does say, I think by mutual consent, it could be extended, um, but... I don't know that we can specify a date, I really would like someone to talk about where the, it would go, whether or not they, in the few days that they've had, if they've booked for another location, what would be involved in that, so that we could come up with what is a reasonable timeline in which to accomplish this. Um, that's on the assumption that the council agrees with, um, the decision for it to be moved, um, that we're not talking about a continuation of a lease or the sale of the property. Because I acted on the basis of it being there, not in any kind of a legal arrangement with the town.
Couple more things to say myself, as far as, you know, just time also wanted to be kept in consideration too. Um, in my tenure with Clayton Homes, I've never seen our industry as busy as it is right now. Uh, I don't have an answer for it, I guess interest rates are at an all-time low. There are, um, you've got Moon's Mobile Home Movers in With County that work for Oakwood. We have Stanley's Mobile Home Movers that work for us in Marion. Um, you have Wade Brothers in Christiansburg, and then you've got another one, Tadpole Mobile Home Movers in Remnoke. I can tell you that if we sell a house today, we are booked until next May getting a home. Now, I'm not saying that he can't get his home moved in that time, but please take into consideration, he's not just gonna be able to call and say, I need to move a home move tomorrow. It, it, it's just not gonna happen.
I think the question is, uh, Council Reese, he, he has the perfect point, communication. You have to communicate with our town manager.
Sure.
No communication is gonna get it in court. Communication with her, she, she's been managing for years, she's willing to work, and she, she will take care of the matter, I mean, just, you know. Please just communicate with her, is all, all we're asking.
Sure.
Anyone else have any other discussion with this? Then I would ask if you would communicate with her, you know, see what we can figure out if you'll help, and we will work with, with you as you will work with us, okay? And we'll see what we can get through on this.
I guess one more question out of your pile of desk. Is buying the property even an option at this point? Or is that something that we'll have to discuss?
I think, I think that's it.
I think, I think it, it may be the best going forward, since we're, we're getting information. Uh, we've, we've had some of the information, the latter was a new piece of information, I think it might be useful if you, as stated, you communicate with Ms. Burson, she'll run it to us and any discussions we can have, and then we can, we can decide where we're gonna go.
I just wanna know which way to direct, and so just take everything, all our concerns, they were.
Yes.
And then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and we'll work through.
But I do think, just to add to that, that we need to be looking at more than one option at the same time. We can't just say, wait for a decision on this and then do this, so, um, if those of you who are interested uh, in this issue would get together and create a plan, you know, that would say, if it has to be moved, then we have, we need to go through these steps and it takes so many days, or, you know, if we are given the opportunity to purchase, this is what would be the offer, what would be involved, so that I can both weigh those, but then take them to the town.
He, he was unable to come tonight, but there has been s- some discussion with Mr. Hagan, David Hagan, and trying to make some alterations and some, some plans to, you know, maybe relocate, but I don't know that that's gonna come through yet, but we are...
But that kind of level of detail of that, just like you're saying, you know, how many days it would take to prepare, um, the trailer for moving, how many days it would, you know, to schedule a move, those kind of things, so that we could talk about what's a reasonable period of time, okay?
And, you know, the moving too also creates damage that's, just, you know. But again, they'll comply and any information, I'll, I'll make sure you have my information too. I'll help any way that I can.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for coming tonight too. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? I think we have, okay.
I can stand, I can't walk well. Oh, boy.
We can...
Definitely a requirement.
If you wanna sit down, we can sit and we'll bring that down.
I, I have been sitting in the car.
Okay, alright.
I, I, I left UVA at four thirty, so... Thank you, just straight from the next one. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you, uh, to you today. My name is Jim Mooney, I'm a property owner here, uh, in Pulaski, I own, uh, over the, uh, the, the brick there, forty-five, forty-seven West Main. There's, uh, it's a, uh, one commercial business downstairs, two apartments upstairs. Um, I understand that, first of all, we just praise the council, let everybody involved with this rejuvenation we're seeing on Main Street. Um, we're seeing a lot of people, or investments coming in, it looks like, looks like people are fixing places up. Looks like they're bringing some new apartments in, I think, stuff like that, so I think that's great. And, uh, uh, part of this, this rehabilitation, this redevelopment, uh, you know, people are investing, and there's gonna be a lot more people downtown, all right, people living downtown, not necessarily just shopping downtown, so... Got this notice, uh, about parking, and nobody's gonna be allowed to park on the street more than two hours, okay? Um, I have some questions, but the first thing I'd like to just have people consider is that there is, and it's just counting on my fingertips, at least nineteen apartments downtown. You guys may know better than I how many there are actually, but I, I, just again, off my fingertips, I can't come up with nineteen. There is absolutely no parking. Period, end of story. For these apartments that are pretty much already there and the ones that are being added. So first of all, I'd like for you guys to consider what you're gonna do about that, because that is something that's gonna need to be addressed. Secondly, the, uh, I was wondering at, at what point was, uh, was, is this an ordinance, a new ordinance? Was something passed that, that, uh, that brought this into being, and if so, what was the impetus for it?
The signs haven't been there for decades, I mean, I've, I've pre-looked, I'm friends with multiple of the people that have the buildings, have the apartments, have businesses, and, and I've parked there a good amount throughout the week. Um, but those signs have been there for at least a decade, as long as I've been.
Right, and have not been enforced. And that's, as you just pointed out, common knowledge. So again, the question begs, while the site, was there somebody complaining, is there a business that, uh, got no place to park? What businesses downtown have so many people coming in that there's no place to park? I mean, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be, be crass here or anything like that, but what businesses do we have to generate that kind of foot traffic now that the pawn shops come?
I can tell you one, I'm sorry, but I was just gonna get this question. You got to tell you one of the complaints we got is from the, uh, the Tactical Store that does, uh, concealed weapon classes.
With the, with the parking lot across the side speed?
No, 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 one right across the courthouse, right, right beside the, uh, in Martin, pocket car.
Pardon me?
One, right beside the pocket car, the...
Okay, okay.
He moved across for a bigger venue because he needed more space because his business had grown.
Mm-hmm.
One of, he's one, one of the things that brought it on was that when he had his concealed weapons class, uh, whether, I, I'm not gonna give you a number what he's got in because I don't know, but I know it's ten, fifteen, or twenty people.
Right.
They come to his business to park, if the people in parks parking there, there's nowhere for them to park, they are having to park up the road or over in somebody else's parking lot to walk to his business.
Mm-hmm.
He was one of it, brought it up, uh, uh, to, you know, to taking up his parking places in front of the businesses. That's one of them's brought it up, and then the other business down the road was basically saying the same thing, that people come into town looking for a place to park, come in front of the business, if there's no one there, it, everything is convenience now, it's...
Oh, sure, oh, sure.
So it's very inconvenient to have to walk, I'm sorry, uh, uh, half a block, they're not gonna shop there. They're gonna go to where they can pull in front of the store.
And they're, and people aren't gonna live there either. And, and people aren't gonna live there either if these apartments are gonna like of going empty. People are putting money into renovating these things, they're gonna go empty. You know, it's, it's, it's just as important for that as it is for this business. And if you have one business that's occupying fifteen parking spaces on the street, there ain't that many parking spaces to begin with.
I would actually challenge that, there's plenty of parking in town, I work in town. I'm in, I drive through, run my bike through town. There's usually plenty of parking in the public parking lots that are spaced over by Central Gym. There's one next to the courthouse, which is close to Main Street. Those are places that would be ideal places for a homeowner or renter to park, not very far. Somebody could park in front of the apartment, unload if they needed to, and then park somewhere else. I did that for many years, I lived in an apartment for a long time, and I did the same thing, I walked far, farther than that to find parking. Um, and I think there's plenty of parking in town, I think though, if we wanna vibrant downtown, we need to make sure that people aren't parking for long periods of time in front of businesses. If I was a business owner or looking to open a business, and I saw that there were cars that were parked for long periods of times and not moving, I would think, well, where are my customers gonna park?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I think as, you know, we have a, we don't have a residency problem as much as we have, from downtown, as we have a business problem, we don't have enough businesses in the spaces that we have, and that's the priority to me, is making sure that that is those...
It, it's only gonna get worse, so what is the...
That's a problem I'm looking forward to having.
Well, but, but the, the problem i- i- is here, it's now. The problem is not gonna be five years from now, when these businesses close because there's no parking for nobody. All right, this problem is now, and I'm gonna implore the council to come up with some kind of a plan. All right, whether it's more satellite parking, properly delineated with spaces marked. I mean, you said, uh, you kinda had a, a little bit of a contradiction there, you said, there's plenty of parking downtown. Well, evidently, there's not plenty of parking downtown.
Well, not there.
There, there's not plenty of parking on the street, there's plenty of parking in parking lots. I mean, I, I could probably count two hundred parking spots fairly easily, without trying too hard, that are all within three blocks of, you know, Main Street.
I, I would say that you brought up something that has been very openly discussed amongst this council, uh, of trying to improve the public parking areas that we do have, to make them much more user-friendly. You know, much more accessible to, you know, to where those are much more functional from a standpoint of public parking areas, there, there is some opportunity with lighting and, and marking and...
Without a doubt, without a doubt. And I, I would, maybe you say if you could have maybe a follow-on notice to this, suggesting where people should park? Rather than get out of town, which is basically what this says, make other arrangements, go. Not, we have other parking to offer, which you, you just told me, and I agree with it. Right, but that's not what this says, this says get out of town.
Miss Burson, you...
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we actually had a number of, um, businesses complain, uh, that parking was not being enforced and people were parking all day, um, in spots, um, on the street. And so we discussed it and did several things. First of all, we replaced the signs that were, um, antiquated and difficult to read. The signs now indicate the hours in which enforcement will occur, which is the hours of nine to five, Monday through Friday. They did not specify in the past either of those items. And we did not vary the parking, uh, per block to make it easier for people to understand. Uh, we are looking at, uh, the issue of parking for accommodation of people who perhaps need to park in those hours of nine to five, Monday through Friday, who are apartment dwellers. Uh, I have worked with that situation in other communities, and one solution that we are looking at, um, is, um, a small decal that would be put on the vehicles that would indicate that this is a resident, and they have some slightly different parking privileges, but again, it's not all day. Uh, I certainly agree with Mr. Dawson's comments that we are looking at, um, how to improve, uh, the existing parking that we have and access to that parking. And I'm looking at a couple of areas where we need to maybe improve what I'll call the cut-throughs in order to make it easier for people to utilize, uh, the parking. Parking is, or the lack of parking is a good problem to have, it means that your community is growing. But we also have to educate people that you cannot always park immediately in front of where you want to do business or where you live. And so I agree with your suggestion that we ought to, uh, in our next communications, some ideas about alternate places to park, and we'll certainly work on that.
Yeah, I, I have no, no problem with the sentiment, all right? One of my tendencies in business, needs parking, all right? And the other thing...
He doesn't need to park in front of his business all the time, and we have some business people that have been doing that.
Well, they're gonna have to move too, so they're gonna have to get used to it. Um, I, I hope this doesn't wind up being one of those unintended consequences things where folks are gonna park in front of their own business owner, yeah.
I think this is relatively, it's relatively a newer deal, uh, a new, a new concern with the new apartments that have gone on Main Street. I live on Third Street. Main Street forever wasn't occupied at all, there were no apartments, or very, very few, um, there's considerably more now.
I know, I put a lot of money into Dixon.
So, so you know, you know well, so it's, it's, it's a recent problem, but I, I agree with, with what everyone said. We, we do need to look at the public parking areas, but long-term, if you go to most downtown areas, certainly vibrant downtown areas, you have limited parking time-wise. And, and so the, the ones that are living in the downtown areas end up in a, you know, as you say, a satellite parking lot. I think ultimately that's where we need to go.
No, I have no problem with that, I agree with you a hundred percent, I agree with the sentiment behind this whole thing.
And the fact that we're enforcing it now, I think it's just a, it is, is because it's become an issue, which, as Ms. Burson said, is a good problem to have with the addition of the apartments on Main Street, so...
No, I, I agree, but, but the, the, this is kind of a cart and horse thing. If you could, tell people they gotta go someplace else, you gotta tell them, excuse expression, tell them where to go, and give them someplace good to go to. Someplace that is lit, as most downtown is, someplace that has a fair amount of visibility. This is one nice thing about parking downtown, especially at night, and I know this does not address at night, right? But face it, if you're in an apartment and you had a parked on the street, you know, parked in the corner of the lot during the day, you're not gonna come down and move your car at night. I mean, it's gonna stay there, so, you know, well-lit, clean places to park and effective communication of that, I think it needs to... I think needs to really, really become top one. And as far, as far as regarding this goes, because this, this, while it certainly sends a message, is not, I'm sure, what the message the council really wanted to say. Okay, I, maybe I'm, I'm, maybe I'm, I'm mistaking this totally, but anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, appreciate your effort, especially everything you've put into fixing up downtown. Um, I know before this happened, uh, when I first got that property, my wife and I did a lot of cleanup around there. We planted some stuff, and, you know, repainted, and, uh, it, uh, it's a little bit more difficult for us now, but we believe in plastic. I mean, that's why we bought here. We think that this town's going someplace. And I wanna be able to support the council, you know, and I do. In this action, just not thrilled with the way it happened.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Ms. Bertram, though, that we need to rephrase.
Yeah.
Or, you know, put where alternatives are placed by-
Maybe hold us in a balance for a month or two, until you can get, you know, get things straightened out. Here's where these people are gonna park, here's where we're gonna direct them to. I mean, because this is gonna be forever. So, the more work that we do upfront to make sure it gets done right, the better it's gonna be in the future, as opposed to having them change, change ordinances, change where people move, people go, stuff like that. So, again, just consider it. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, especially your ref-
Ms. Bertram, I, I think it would be interesting to have a, I don't have a full understanding of where all the areas are that are available to us, I do know some of them, but, uh, I, I think it might be a good discussion for council to, to be able to see, you know, where all the parking areas are, where the apartments relative to, and start to, to lay out a long-term plan, and, and certainly the lighting of the parking lots and as, uh, we've done and stated, uh, with the properly marked, I think that's something that we, we could do relatively inexpensively.
You know, a little map about that at the bottom of the door is a long, long way, I think.
Be a good discussion.
Thank you very much. If there's anything I can do, uh, Collins, I believe you have my email. Send me a shout.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have your license plate now.
Yeah, you do.
Okay, I'm go.
I'm going, I'm going.
No, I don't need it.
There's no others. Move on. Uh, consideration of September fifteenth, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve, uh, council meeting minutes from September fifteenth and September twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, um, and all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Is there any old business today?
Oh, sure.
Okay, and new business? It looks like we have resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-one, Water Fund Carried Forward Resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, uh, approve resolution twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty dash thirty-one, sorry, amending of Water Fund Budget for the town of Pulaski, Virginia, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty, and ending July, February, twenty twenty-one, to include funds carried forward from the previous fiscal year. Second.
We will call that, please. Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Fong?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Um, the managers' report.
Aye.
Oh, wait, I missed the two, three.
I'm, 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 I'm gonna forget you.
Yeah, we need to, yeah. Do one, I'll do one.
All right, I've, uh, moved to, Mr. Mayor, move to free resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-two, Resolution Appropriating Funds from the General Fund for the General Chemical Company Remediation Grant.
Second.
And can I have a roll call for that? Mr. Penn?
Aye.
Dawson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Fong?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
The resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I made that we adopt resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-three, Resolution Appropriating Funds from the Water Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance for Repair and Rehabilitation of Filter Number Two at the Water Treatment Plant.
Okay. And then we'll call for that. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Mr. Fong?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Let's go on to the managers' report, let's start.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items, but Mr. Mooney took away one of them. I was going to mention that we, uh, have, uh, put up the new, uh, street signs, and just yesterday, when we were having the ribbon cutting, uh, for the pocket park, uh, the police were putting the notices out, uh, with the plan at that point, prior to the discussion, uh, that we would be issuing notices, warnings for the month of October, and not begin enforcement until the first of November. But I'll certainly go back and look at those things based upon, uh, the conversation today. I would want to mention, because we had a fun activity as a staff. I've been working the staff very, very hard, but we found a way to enjoy ourselves by participating in, uh, the decoration of what I'm now calling the duck family, D U C G A, family of, uh, the town. Uh, each of the departments decorated one of the ducks, and we submitted them as a family. Unfortunately, uh, only one of them, uh, the fire department one, uh, was recognized as the third place winner, and we're still trying to figure out how we can permanently display, uh, our five ducks. We're thinking about putting them in Peak Creek on that little island, uh, so everybody can see them, and maybe put them in a little boat so they could kind of float as we have rain. But it really turned out, I think, to be a, a team-building exercise that everyone enjoyed, and they are on display in the window at the Fine Art Center, so please go by and see, um, our ducks. Did also want to mention to the council that we have just completed three months into the fiscal year, and I'm pleased to report that so far, knock on wood, uh, we are maintaining, uh, revenues at the twenty-four, twenty-five percent level, which in fact is par for the first three months. So, uh, we are weathering, uh, the key revenues reasonably well. You'll recall that we did do a budget adjustment in July and, uh, tailored down some of those estimates, but we seem to be holding our own, um, and the staff is certainly working to keep expenses very, uh, conservative, and we will continue to do that. Uh, lastly, I want to just mention, and hopefully get the council's concurrence, uh, in a conversation that I had with Peter Huber recently, I learned that Virginia's First, which is the, what I'll call a commerce center, uh, for the area, has been holding, uh, eighty-seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars in the name of the town for many, many years without any specific purpose. And, uh, Mr. Huber indicated that with the council's, um, request, he would be happy to release that money, uh, to the town, and we could always use additional funds into the general fund. So, uh, I would ask that one of you just make a motion, um, in an informal kind of way, to ask for the Virginia's First organization to return that amount to us and in no way impacts our relationship, uh, with the organization or may they go in, uh, in the future. Some of the other jurisdictions that our participants have asked for that money in the past and received it, a few of them continue to just leave it in what I'll call a holding pattern. Um, and since there's no, uh, immediate purpose for it, I think we could find, um, a way to spend it wisely, uh, with some of the ongoing expenses that we have.
What was that amount?
Eighty-seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Eighty-seven thirty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, or, or, I'm sorry, were you done with the managers' report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the town manager to ask Virginia First to return, um, money designated for the town of Pulaski in the amount of eighty-seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, now, I would ask that we would go back, come out of recess for the closed session, go back into closed session to discuss our, let me just fill it in. I'll just reset all of it. Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, big A, one, concerning personnel matter involving evaluation of the interim town manager and employee interviews. And two, two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, big A, three, involving acquisition or disposition of property. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, little a, eight, consultation with legal counsel. So, move?
Aye.
And then we'll call him. Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Ragland?
Aye.
Fong?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.